Right over your head, Carl.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
And the agenda is recognition.
I know that Dawn will be welcoming the board members a little bit more formally after this recognition, but I wanted to say congratulations and welcome to the Board of Ed. And you get to be a part of, the best part of every Board of Education meeting.
Yes.
Is when we recognize our students. And tonight, we're going to be recognizing a few student athletes. Some new faces and some returning for some great recognition. First is Serral Green from the middle school. Yeah, Serral, come on up. Have a seat, make yourself comfortable, enjoy the recognition, soak it in. So I do have a write-up from his coach at the middle school. So Serral Green, sixth grade, had a great second season in the middle school cross-country. He started the season running the home course in a time of fifteen minutes and fifty-two seconds. Three weeks later, he had cut a minute and forty-one seconds off his time completing the course in roughly fourteen minutes. A week later, he took another nine seconds off. And then, following, he finished in fourteen minutes and two seconds, taking first place and winning the meet by a fraction of a second. And then on October twenty-first, he won the NEMSEC race with a minute, a time of fourteen minutes and one second. So for all of the board members, NEMSEC brings together a variety of middle schools. And you know, at a typical meet, you're running versus one school. He won versus all the schools as a sixth grader, pretty cool accomplishment. So he was and is an example of determination and effort. As a team, we worked on effort and teamwork all season. And all season long, Serral ran hard with a smile on his face. When asked to jog, he would run. When asked to run, he would sprint. And when asked to sprint, he would push himself harder. In the week leading up to the NEMSEC, Serral was determined not to let someone from another school take first place and possibly have the course record. And the race takes place right here at our complex. He worked on a plan on how to best fulfill his wish. Together with his teammates, we helped him work on the plan and practice it to see it come to fruition. After completing his goal at the NEMSEC, Serral set his sights on states. He came into practice with a specific goal to finish top ten. We worked on the plan and put it into action. While he did not make his goal this year of making it to top ten, he did finish in the top fifty. He can now see how much it will take to be in the top ten. And I am certain he will continue to put forth the effort to reach his goal. Again, great season and great example of what it means to persevere and be a team player. Congratulations, Serral. I didn't want to put undue pressure onto him. He and his family were here a little bit early, and I happened to open the gym doors today and had him take a peek at some of the banners in there in hopes that maybe he can have his name up there and help a team banner be hung, which is a perfect segue to the next set of athletes that we'll be recognizing today. So our first athlete, and since we had our middle school student lead by example here, I'd ask Hazel Delucia to come forward and sit at the table here or representative from her family. Hazel is here, she's in the back. Hi Hazel, come on up. So Hazel should be a familiar face to some of our returning board members. This is not the first time she's been recognized for her talents on cross-country or track and field, and she is an outstanding student athlete, as you will hear in the write-up provided by her coach. So this fall, Hazel earned all-state honors for her fourth consecutive year. An incredible accomplishment that reflects her consistency, dedication, and love for the sport. At the Class S state meet, Hazel finished second overall for the second year in a row, helping the girls earn their second consecutive Class S title. Hazel also represented our school at the New England meet in Vermont, where she earned all-New England honors for the second time with an impressive eleventh-place finish against the best runners from across the region. Throughout her career at Lyman, Hazel has also been a three-time ECC champion. Hazel's commitment in the classroom also earned her academic all-state honors. Hazel's focus, determination, and competitiveness has set the standard for excellence in our program. Her commitment to training and her drive to perform at her best has been an inspiration to her teammates. We're incredibly proud to celebrate Hazel's success and the mark she has left on Lyman Memorial Cross-Country. Congratulations. Now bring up another teammate of yours who has some special recognition, Sylvie Hiltz. Sylvie here? Come on up, Sylvie. So Coach writes, "Four years of long, hard work and dedication paid off at the Class S state meet when Sylvie finished eleventh to earn all-state honors for the first time. Sylvie's placing played a key role in helping Lyman capture its second state title in two years. She followed up that performance the following week with a Wickham Park PR at the state open meet and helped a team to a strong thirteenth-place finish among the top programs in Connecticut. Sylvie's success also stretches into the classroom where she earned academic all-state honors. Sylvie is deeply admired by her teammates for her positivity, sportsmanship, and steady leadership. She shows up every day, ready to work hard and give her best effort, no matter the workout or conditions. Sylvie is incredibly dedicated and committed, not only to her own improvement, but also the success of her teammates and the program as a whole. This season, we are especially proud of the tremendous growth in her confidence and mental toughness, which helped her reach a new level as both an athlete and competitor. Sylvie's focus, resilience, and team-first attitude made her an essential part of Lyman Memorial's success." Congratulations. The rest of the team to stand along or sit next to their teammates, come on up. Coach, I see you back there, if you don't mind coming up as well. So our girls' cross-country team, this talented and determined group captured the Class S state title for the second year in a row, building on last year's win and a runner-up finish in 2023. They got a dynasty going for sure. The thrilling race came down to a battle for every point, and the girls showed incredible tenacity and grit, edging out Shepog Valley by four points to claim the win. Together, they delivered a true team performance, placing the five scoring runners in the top twenty-five, led by Senior Hazel Delucia, Senior Sylvie Hiltz, Sophomore Nora Johnson, Sophomore Elizabeth Pearson, Junior Lucy Gardella, Junior Hannah Bauer, and Sophomore Sabrina Shanks. This group's commitment, work ethic, and belief in one another have been the foundation of their success. Every athlete contributed to the effort, whether on the course, summer training and practice, or race day. They were consistently pushing each other to be their best. Their teamwork, resilience, and competitive spirit exemplify what it means to be a Lyman Memorial Bulldog. Congratulations. So I know you have several recognitions that will be coming along that will definitely be better than the certificate I'm providing you tonight, but please take it as a small token of our appreciation and support for you as student athletes. You make us all proud, thank you. Mr. Appicelli has right behind you. Congratulations, girls.
All right.
Yeah.
Moving on to board reorganization. I have several new board members joining us. We have Carrie, John, Carl, and Elizabeth. Forward to up. Next item of business is the election of officers for the coming year. We will elect Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. We'll conduct nominations and voting for each office separately, beginning with the Office of the Chair. Nominations are now in order for the Office of the Chair.
I nominate Dawn Witcher for Chair of the Board of Education.
A nomination for Chair accepted. Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? None, nominations are closed. There being only one nomination, all those in favor of electing Dawn Witcher as Chair, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair.
I nominate Brian Green for Vice Chair.
Brian Green has been nominated? Any further nominations for Vice Chair? Any further nominations? There are none. Nominations for Vice Chair are now closed. There being only one nomination, all those in favor for electing Brian Green as Vice Chair, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Secretary.
I nominate Rachel Archer.
Rachel Archer? Who accepts? Chris?
I would like to nominate, you know, Pearson.
Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Are there any more nominations? There are none, nominations for Secretary are now closed. The nominees for Secretary are Rachel Archer and Danell Person, Pearson. I always say it wrong, don't I? I'm so sorry. All those, we'll start with Rachel since she was nominated first. All those in favor, please raise your hand for Rachel Archer. You vote for yourself, yeah? That is Carrie, Nicole, Dawn, Rachel, and Elizabeth. All those in favor for Danell, please raise your right hand. That is Carl, Brian, Danell, I'm sorry, John, Brian, Carl, and Danell. Rachel Archer takes it. The elections of officers is complete. Congratulations to the newly-elected officers. You just need to change your seats. While they are getting settled, because we also already know about the form. At your seat, you have a form that looks like this. It has the current makeup of committees that we have. And so we ask that you fill out committees that you are interested in serving on. If you are interested in being Chair of that committee, mark it as such, either as right Chair or just put a star next to it. We'll collect these at the end of the meeting tonight, and then governance review and make those appointments. If anybody is wondering what EastCon is, we haven't filled that in a long time. EastCon is a regional education center, and they have a board much like ours, but it's made up of elected board members from various towns. We just haven't been able to fill that one in a long time. Any questions on this form?
Do they need a writing utensil?
All right. So we will move right along to public participation. In accordance with Board Bylaw nine zero one one, we invite public participation. We have allotted a total of thirty minutes. Each community member is allowed two minutes. Is there any member of the community who would like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. If you're following along in your packet, the consent agenda starts on page ten. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Brian, second by Nicole, any discussion? Motion to approve the consent agenda, those in favor, please raise your hand. Robert's rules allows you to vote if you want to. If you want to abstain, that's totally fine too, since you weren't here.
I'll abstain.
Yeah, I'll abstain as well.
So all those in favor is John, Nicole, Brian, Dawn, Rachel, and Danell. Anyone opposed? Subventions. Carrie, Elizabeth, and Carl. Student representatives. Your office at your table too.
I had emailed Mr. Elliott to find out all the seniors that were doing sports this year or have done sports, and he had sent me a list of them, so I had sent out a Google form asking them just like a reflection over how it went, and I got the results of how it went. So most of the senior sports were in the spring. Most of them had played their sports for five or more years, and a lot of them had played for all four years of them being here and continued to play throughout the seasons. A lot of the seniors were in various different sports, so we got to see different answers along the lines of how they liked it, their favorite moments, and what they did, because they weren't all in the same sport. I had also asked what their favorite thing about the sport was. A lot of them said it was the teamwork and like the relationships they had made throughout, all the people they got to meet, all the friendships, the coaches, and just the good overall sportsmanship. I had also asked if they wanted to continue with their sport after Lyman, because we're going to be heading out to college. I didn't know if they wanted to continue that going into college or if they were going to take a break from college to go do their sport. Forty percent said yes, thirty percent said no, and then the other thirty said they were still unsure. I asked if they had any favorite moments, and I had given them two different options. I put a yes option and I put a no option. For the yes option, I asked what that moment was, and mainly it was about the team wins, personal wins, and team hangout moments. And for the no question, I asked if they had a stronger connection with the team or coach. And they said they had more connections with the team than they had the coach, but they still had a really good connection with their coaches. And then most of their seasons had gone well, and they are planning for them to go well. And a lot of them said that their sport was really fun and they had a lot of friends, and that's why they continue to play it, and they really liked that. And a lot of them said that they didn't really have anything to change about how they acted other than personal reflections. And then, over to you.
So you guys all have a packet, and this is merely because I wanted to show you guys pictures. We had Pac students who went to Nationals. So Nationals was held in Indianapolis this year, and we had fourteen that had gone. So we had marketing, which placed silver. And students that were on that team were Piper McHyver, Brianna Doyle, and Caitlin Hour. We had mill quality, which placed bronze, which had Mark Nettleton, Jayden Waduser, Peter Podolsky, and Peyton Hastings. Then we had farm business management, which placed bronze, which we had students such as, I can't really see their faces, but I know that some of them were Joseph Chichili. I think that's how you pronounce his last name. We also had Philip Mill, I believe that, and Matt Dubicki, and we had another student. And then we also had livestock judging, which placed bronze, who we had William Wild, Alyssa Sikowski, Addison Cohn, and Mackenzie Christensen. We had overall eighteen students who had gone to Nationals, favorite delegates. So for students who were delegates, that meant that they weren't actually competing at Nationals. However, they went just for the fun of it. This doesn't mean that they just kind of sat around. They went and did workshops performed by the National Officers. Continuing on, we had the Apple Xbox, which was on October twenty-fourth, which I kind of gave up the idea of. It was just a fun activity to do before we had majority of the officer team go off to Nationals. And what we called it was Apple Day, so it was all Apple-oriented. We had Apple games such as Apple Bingo, Apple on a String, coloring things that were FFA and Apple-related. We also had decorate clothespins. So students who won Ag Bingo and Apple on a String won either a pumpkin doughnut or an apple cider doughnut. The thing I really liked about this was we had a lot of students who were involved. So usually with Ag, when we do like fun Xbox, is we usually have people bring in food, because what, teenagers just don't like food? And that motivates all children. So this year, we didn't, well, not this year, but this Xbox, we didn't want to do where we had students bringing food, because we wanted people to participate to do, like to get the apple cider doughnut. We also had served apple cider, which was hot and cold. And a lot of students participated, which was the really nice thing, because I feel like that's something we really struggle with. And we asked some like the more like senior students, and they said they had really liked it and they wanted to look at some more things like that. And then continuing for the Ag portion of open house, we had FFA officers giving tours to eighth graders, myself included, which was really nice. We got to talk to a lot of the parents and talk to all the students and answer a lot of questions, because especially with, like I'm from out of town, I live in Marlboro, so that's like a thirty-minute drive from here. So it's easy for parents to ask me like, oh, well, what does busing look like? So that was really nice, because a lot of our officers are from out of town, so that was really nice. We had bingo cards provided for eighth graders, so they went to, they had to go to each room and talk to someone. Or example, in Ms. Gergens' room, the plant lab teacher and horticulture teacher, we had them get little bouquets of flowers, which were really nice. We had in Ms. Chombs' room, where they had to kind of go in there and look at the fish and look at this thing and that thing. And Ms. Burton's room, we had our chicken coops on display, and they got to ask a student in there. We also had students place in every room, which was really nice, because they were students who got to go into more depth about everything that like, not all the officers know. Like, not every officer is in like everything in Ag, so it was easy. We had students who brought their SE projects. So we had a student who had a dog in Ms. Chombs' room, which was really nice, because people got to ask questions. We also had served popcorn and cheese platter and fruit platter. And we had, on the fruit platter, we had pineapples and grapes and blackberries, which also motivated children to want to come. We had this big like poster of pictures for Nationals to explain that to children and parents. We also had current students, again, stick to their rooms. We also had a photo booth, which I think a lot of students liked. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a hold of a lot of the pictures from these. That's why there's not any, but that was a really big success on the Ag portion. We knew that a lot of kids came. And then for the farmer's breakfast, that was a big hit. That was more so for like Ag as a fundraiser, but I thought I'd kind of bring it up because it was just current things that are going on in Ag, which we made a lot of money for that. And Ag was just really interesting with that, like it was total fun. We had a bunch of kids coming for early shifts and et cetera. And then the last thing is, I wanted to just add this to add kind of like last-minute things, but like, so in our officer meetings, I like to add things because like a lot of it is important. Like, we're changing Ag and we're improving it. So things we wanted to talk about was having like a newspaper to spotlight SEs. So example, we were thinking of having students such as Taylor Lawrence be like a spotlight, because she's very big into like her cows, and like wanting to add pictures to Nationals. And also, we had sent an ex-student, Kristarnik, a hundred and fifty dollars for representing Connecticut, which was really nice. And I just thought I'd kind of add that stuff to give you guys kind of an overall way to Ag, because not a lot of people ask about Ag, so.
Well done.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Questions?
Lawson and Cassidy, you can head out for tonight. Thank you so much for your participation.
Thank you.
Moving on to reports of committees. Brian, policy.
Here's a big one. So there are, there were several policy revisions from last fall. We made a bunch of updates last fall and early spring. And there were a bunch more updates from Chip Manon, who are, we need to both review and provide all that stuff to us. So just for the Board's awareness, the superintendent is able to go through board policies that don't have major changes. They're more, you know, technical. They may move something around or stuff like that. All of the policies I'm going to read off had some, were more substantial than that. So next month, December, is what we call our first read. It means that the Board gets the opportunity between now and then to read through them the first time. Again, I'll re-mention that it was the first read when we get to December's meeting. And that, and then in the month of January, we call that the second reading, but that's actually when we move on up to the policies. What I will say upfront for all of these policies is there's really honestly not a whole lot to talk about. There's a lot to tell you, but not a lot to talk about, because they are legal changes that are being, you know, brought forward to us by the attorneys that we need to take care of. So Policy one zero zero three, it's non-discrimination in the community. It added some language on sexual assault and human trafficking as protected classes. In our three thousand series on budget procedures and transfers, there was an update in Public Act twenty-five dash ninety-three that required annual report of non-lapsing to State Department of Education and also to the board of members. And also to the Board needs to notify the parties of intended use of any non-lapsing funds. So that's something a little new for us. Policy four zero one two is non-discrimination of personnel. It's basically the same, pretty much a mirror is the non-discrimination of community. Four zero zero nine was the sex discrimination and harassment in the workplace. Let's see. Need a little help on that one. Authorizes a board employee. No, that's not it.
Which one were you on, Brian?
Social discrimination and harassment in the workplace, four zero zero nine.
That was similar to the one for the community updating protected classes.
Awesome, thank you. That's why that's next to that. Okay. Four zero zero three, reports of suspected use and neglected children. As mandated reporters, everybody, you know, every mandated reporter, if they suspect something, has to automatically report it. This changes it a bit to see internally if there's actually reasonable cause as it exists. Four zero one zero was, we last updated that in our social media policy. Basically, this, it, Board of Education has limited rights to limit employee speech, meaning employees of the Board and social media. Five zero two six, administration of medications. That was in Public Act twenty-five dash one forty-three. It basically just expanded the year. It basically just expanded the use. Uh, before, like, Epi, uh, Gluco, stuff like that, was injectables. This made it more oral or nasal, depending upon whatever, so we can, um, just update it for what's out there in the, in the marketplace. Five zero three zero, confidentiality and access to records. Uh, FERPA permits, um, but doesn't require disclosure if a parent claims a student as a dependent. So the, the, the school can release those records to the parent, um, if, uh, the parent does claim them as a dependent and if they so, uh, request. Five zero three three, uh, child sexual assault and abuse. It, it did a lot of updating in that policy, mainly in state contacts, um, and in district contacts, too. Um, beginning the five thousand series, a student discipline policy. Uh, this one was updated for challenging behavior, um, IDEA, um, it updated, there were further updates, um, legally in, uh, just a discipline policy on the legal standard, so it, again, that all got pushed down to us. Six zero one zero is, uh, curriculum exemptions. Uh, BOA has to permit five areas of, uh, instruction and consider others. Um, bringing, uh, religious upbringing is, uh, also must be, um, considered. And then six zero one five, parental access to, um, instructional material, that was from Public Act twenty-five dash one seventy-four. In the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, it starts then, um, schools must post the curriculum and plans, you know, on the websites, which we're all already pretty well ahead of. Um, and then we've got a couple of policies that, um, will be coming down the pike a little bit later. But that is the list of policy stuffs that are in your, uh, board packet for your reading enjoyment, so.
These are not.
Oh, they're not? They will be in your board packet, I'm sorry.
I was like, I must have missed a lot of pages.
I'm sorry, 'cause Chelsea emailed them to me and I just, yeah.
Um, any questions on policy?
How far in advance? It sounds like a lot of reading, but we have access to that stuff.
So as we kind of discussed in a, in the orientation meetings, uh, Chelsea attempts to put out the board packet the Friday before. So it is not much, it's the, the weekend, but it is for that first reading, so you can kind of do more of a cursory review, then you'll have a, a second opportunity in January. So essentially, you're gonna have a month to do a deeper dive into the policies.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions? Now, strategic plan curriculum. Rachel, finance.
We met this evening, um, we went over the, what has been already done for the budget and our future dates and deadlines. And then we went over, um, the capital for our first time. And we have some of these coming up that we're gonna dive deeper into capital, but not much else to report.
Any questions for Rachel on finance? Nicole, facilities.
Uh, facilities, we met this evening. Uh, the first thing we did was update our old business, uh, catch basins, two of the three are completing, completed. We are, um, there was one left to be done, and that will be done before the winter. The LMS exterior door waiting for parts, LES stairs, um, awaiting another quote. Um, there was one concrete, about twenty-five thousand dollars, we're waiting for another one about, for, uh, in granite. And then, um, the anticipated, uh, project will be done for the stairs in the spring or the summer. And then the fire pump controller at LES still waiting install. Next, we talked about the LES classroom renovation. Work is being done in-house, um, they are currently working on indoor cosmetics. Next, we talked about the LMS ERV unit, um, we are currently waiting for parts, this is the second coil that needed to be replaced. Um, and then finally, we talked about bid surplus projects. Um, so the town awarded us six hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. We allotted fifty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars for cameras, which, which is an ongoing process in all three schools. The track, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars. Uh, we are booking an agreement with Cape and Island. The parking law, a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars, processes are ongoing in all three schools. Um, and then finally, the, what we didn't talk about, what I'm going to be putting forth on future, uh, facilities subcommittee meetings is the, um, uh, the building pro- the building committee project. We would like to be very transparent and, um, align whatever they're talking about, what their projects are, into the facility's subcommittee meeting, so that, um, it's very aligned and transparent.
Any questions? Okay. Um, we wanna take back up to the finance report really quickly, because I, I wanted to clarify. Later on, on the agenda, you'll see twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. And so we'll be reviewing the current budget, and what Rachel was speaking about was preparing, preparing for next fiscal year's budget. Um, anyone who identifies that they would like to be on the finance subcommittee, please know that they meet during budget season, they meet multiple times. Um, and usually, or oftentimes, it ends up not on a board meeting night.
Yeah, so I was just gonna maybe come back a little bit in terms of the timeline. Finance sends out a, a budget calendar and process for all departments. We have our own Board of Ed side that has a, a calendar, kinda works as a side-by-side of all the things that we need to do in preparation to meet the Board of Finance deadlines. So, you know, just giving you an idea of how big a process it is to develop a, uh, school district budget. We started passing out forms and gathering input from our staff in September. The budget in each building was built through the month of October. We had meetings with every building administrator to review their budget. The capital drafts were also, uh, submitted to the business office. Uh, Martha and I have been able to do an initial review of those. That's kind of what we brought to the subcommittee at this meeting. And be, prior to the December meeting, we will have an, uh, an entire district roll-up that will give us, uh, our very first and early draft projection of what the overall increase, uh, will be. With some placeholders, because we have a few different bargaining units who have not yet been negotiated, uh, for their next contract, and we don't have solid insurance figures. Those don't typically come until much later into the spring, unfortunately, and that's nothing that we can control. But we will have a good working number by the December.
Any questions? Okay. Uh, Brian's, school building committee.
So the school building committee, um, met only once, um, to date, and that was two weeks ago. Uh, the, a lot of, that first meeting was really just, you know, kinda background stuff and getting organized, work, um, going on. The, uh, next meeting is Tuesday, next Tuesday. Um, Arcadius, who is the, uh, instruction, or owner's rep, um, the meeting is primarily going to be revolving around them. We've got a, a little bit of business to discuss at the, at the outset with, you know, payment of bills and stuff like that, but it's really gonna be try to, uh, shape the discussion to, to, to begin to understand how this process will work. Um, speak to Arcadius about, um, grant process for, um, non-priority list that is a month, month after month ongoing, uh, process. The state accepts applications every month for that, for, um, primarily for HVAC and roof work. So while it's going to take quite s- uh, quite a bit of planning in order to get, um, the actual package to the state for, um, each of the buildings and whatever priority Arcadius thinks is, it makes the most sense, and with the, uh, committee's input. Some of the things that we can do in the meantime is actually begin on the HVAC and roofing projects, um, in the, in that grant process. So, uh, next Thursday's meeting is primarily going to be with Arcadius and discussing steps going forward.
Any questions for Brian? Next is the administrative reports. They submit and work it, and it starts on page, or they start on page eighteen.
Yeah, if there's any, sure. I'll be too.
Yes.
Is there anybody who wants to add anything that you, uh, you wanna point out in particular on your report?
Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Hi. So, um, I know our report was a little different, 'cause it was extended this, um, this November. But I wanted to capture, we had a busy couple of first weeks of November, for sure. And, um, we were able to, for our parent-teacher conferences, we were able to invite and have families come in or participate via virtual meetings. And we met with ninety-five percent of our families, so a lot to be proud of. But then soon after that, too, we hosted our veterans' assembly and had close to forty veterans come from the community that were connected to our students, either relatives or parents. And then hosted STEAM night, where we had close to a hundred and twenty students and their families attend. So it's just a lot of celebrate, to celebrate, and I just wanna showcase that for my team. So we had a great beginning of November, lots of family engagement. Thank you.
Anyone else?
On to the superintendent's.
All right. So, in working with the governance, uh, committee, we tried to put together a rather simplified agenda to help welcome our new board members and to transition into the new role. And then I go ahead and blow up that whole plan by putting probably the most complex, uh, data presentation together that, that we could. So, uh, I'm going to apologize in advance for all of the information that I'm gonna try to cover tonight, and that's in the packet in front of you. And I am gonna move very quickly through these slides and try to highlight, uh, the main points. So, the State Department of Education recently released the accountability index ratings and scores and categories for schools based on performance on standardized tests and other measures. Uh, and because it was a public release, I wanted to make sure that I did my part to share with our Board of Education, um, a little bit of a breakdown. Now, I'm gonna say this to you, not to scare you away from the data, but I'm in twenty-plus years of education, more than ten years as a administrator, and I still don't understand the metrics perfectly. So I'm gonna do my best to, to highlight some things. Obviously, our administrative team, if there's anything that you'd like to, uh, piggyback that I, uh, point out or clarify, please, please jump right in. So I'm gonna start with, like, an overview that you'll see at the beginning, and then again at the end, and then I'll get into a little bit of an explanation on those things, right? So our overall accountability index as a district was seventy-six point eight, which that number shows sustained performance above the state averages. And I, I, I know that, um, we don't strive to just be better than state average. We have higher aspirations than that. Uh, and we really are not trying to be in a comparison to others. We're really focused in district on improvement. Uh, and I'll, I'll talk to that a little bit more in the slides. Uh, proud of our participation rate. Um, there are families, uh, that elect to not have their children engage in these important tests that help us drive decision-making. Maybe we had over ninety-seven percent of our population take these tests. And our performance gap between, um, students with high needs is lower than state thresholds, which is also important to demonstrate that we have a really equity-focused, uh, approach, and that we're making progress in those areas. So what is the performance index? So a few administrators and some teachers actually went to a Performance Matters Summit at, uh, the convention center that was put on by the State Department of Education. And Canton Public Schools led a presentation specific to the performance index, and they shared their presentation with us. So I took some slides from that presentation. I took some slides from the EdSite platform, where you can see this data, uh, in real time, if you want to take a peek, uh, on your own time. And then I put my own little spin onto some things. So this does a nice job of breaking down what the performance index is, and the four main groups that are, um, kind of rated. There's performance, there's growth, there's absenteeism, and there's, uh, in the high school, there's the arts in PE section, right? Um, within those four main groups, there are specific indicators, there's twelve of them total that are listed out there. This is from the EdSite data reporting platform. This gives a brief explanation as to what each of the indicators measure. So if you wanted a more detailed explanation, you can go there. And then it also gives you the max points, uh, that a district can get in that specific category. So same thing here, this is going into indicators five through twelve, and then the total possible score for these accountability. This chart, I think, is, uh, probably even more important, and this is something that the administrative team and I have been looking at a lo- a little bit more in detail, because it breaks down per building or school level, what the weight is for every specific indicator. So all of these twelve indicators have different weights that are assigned to them, which obviously impact your overall performance rating. So for example, at the elementary school, you can see that the biggest weight is placed on academic growth. Um, and then you can see down at the high school, they have many more indicators overall that are weighted, that contribute to their rating, and their greatest weight is placed on academic achievement. Then there's the whole difference between performance and growth. This kinda breaks it down here. The performance index score is calculated based on a scale score for each student on each assessment. And it's the average measure of the overall performance on a given content area. And then the growth, these are target scores that are set by the state, um, based on that scale score. And growth scores measure the average percent of the target achieved. Something else that I think you need to know before we get into graphs and the, uh, performance ratings for our schools is understanding what the definition of high need means. 'Cause you're gonna see that there's performance, all students, and then it says performance, high need. And what does that mean? So high needs is a student that either has an IEP or is an English language learner, or qualifies for free and reduced lunch. And that one is probably the most tricky of all of this category, because there's such confidentiality around that last, um, section here, that sometimes we don't even know, you know, the, the, the teachers don't know who they have in front of them. Now, we're aiming to grow all of our learners anyway, uh, but when such a significant weight is placed there, it would be nice to be able to have some more of this information to be able to impact, uh, growth. So now this is diving into the Lebanon Public Schools district-level, uh, performance report. So this is academic achievement, and it gives a nice spread from twenty eighteen all the way to twenty twenty, uh, or twenty-five. All right, so the ELA, all students at seventy-one percent. This is something that we highlighted in, uh, previous reports, that that is the highest we've been in the past five years. Again, not maybe where we want to be, and that's how we get into this data and try to continue to look for ways to improve. But it's a nice trend to know that we're at the highest performance that we've been in the past, uh, five years. And then it breaks it down, uh, into the high needs at sixty-one point six. Um, math, science, and the all-content areas improving, uh, from twenty-three, twenty-four results. So, uh, overall, as a trend, we, we've seen nice improvement. Uh, and specifically, I would say that the high point here would be in ELA at that seventy-one, uh, score of seventy-one, which is the highest we've had in the past five years. Now into student growth, and remember, the, the weight is, is heavy here. You know, this is a real emphasis of these accountability ratings is around student growth. Uh, and, and we, we have some work to do here, and I'll come back to this later when we talk about our overall, um, school category ratings. But even though there's work to do, the students in Lebanon are growing faster than the peers statewide in both ELA and math. These next ones are, are where it starts to get into these, uh, mathematical, uh, calculations, and I, I don't want to overwhelm you with this, but this is, gives you a breakdown of how these scores are actually calculated. It does give you a nice example for a seventh-grade It does give you a nice example for a seventh grade math student. And then this is something that we've talked about before, too, when we've looked at these cohorts and see how they're improving, but sometimes they're improving, but they're not moving up levels because as you age, that scale score expectation increases also. So as you grow, you still have the potential to not grow enough according to the state target and not move out of that category even though you made growth. This one here talks even about the highest level because that was a question, too, is like, what about if you are performing at the highest category? How do they then measure your growth? They've factored that in by doing this last bullet point here of the hundred and one to a hundred and ten percent is given for growth beyond the growth target. They've also factored that in. Overall, this growth is something I think that we as educators have longed for. It's a complicated process, but I at least am very appreciative that they've taken this into account, that it's not just always about what you're scoring, it's about growth because we don't want to forget about the students who might not be at that highest level, even though they're not exactly where we might want them to be, as long as they're trending upward and making growth and reaching their individual growth targets. That is really a focus of ours, too, here in Lebanon. Now diving into some of the specific categories and referencing our growth there. Chronic absenteeism has been something that has been a struggle across the state specifically since we went through COVID. Our team here in Lebanon, I am very proud of them, they've made concentrated efforts to do a lot more outreach to celebrate the importance of attendance, to let students know that school is better when they're here. That was a kind of state motto that we really got behind. And you can see that our chronic absenteeism at twelve point four percent is down from fifteen four percent, fifteen point four percent the year before, and it's also down more than roughly four percentage points for our high needs population. Both of those numbers are significantly better than the state. Our on-track to graduation is at ninety-five point six in our four-year and six-year graduation rates are there for both, for students in the high needs category as well. Our post-secondary entrance, it seems low, and it is low in comparison to previous years. And that was a conversation we were having here. I talked to the administrative team a lot about controlling the controllables, and this one is not really something you can control. We can't make students go to college. And that is one of those questions I have at the state level is, you know, how can this be held against schools when that's not something we ultimately control? Now, are we setting the table for them to go there? Absolutely. We'll get into like the college and career readiness is one of the indicators, and we're right where we need to be in this on-track to graduation. We have a high percent rating there, but what they decide to do after school is a harder one. For us, we were talking about all of the great pathways we've developed in high school. Many, many students are now electing to go in that direction, you know, as we're, we've highlighted the work we're doing around our welding pathway. We already have some students that have made commitments to go work for electric boat. That's not a bad decision. But we kind of get even dinged for that if they don't choose to go to college. Arts access is something we were having conversations about. You know, you get credit for the number of courses that students are exposed to in dance and theater and media arts. So as we've talked in our curriculum subcommittees about the offerings, those are things we're talking about is, what are some courses that are already on the books that have been approved by the board that we might be able to bring back? How do we get more kids to go into that area? And the physical fitness, that's the performance rating, but you actually get a lot of credit for just participation, which we've done really good in. So here's the chart, kind of breaking down all of these different categories that I just referenced for you. So in the blue is the on-track for graduation, and you can see that we had some dips significantly right around that COVID time and how we've trended back upward. We're not where we were back in twenty nineteen, but we're pretty close. The four-year graduation, this one is another tricky one. So if there's a student who elects to go and do adult, adult ed instead of the traditional diploma path, they can be enrolled in that program, but you don't get credit for their graduation. So there are some students that the traditional pathway is not working, and they, and maybe along with their family, make a decision to take that route. And when you're in a school system as small as Lebanon, you have one or two students do that, it can really skew your numbers. And that's what's happened in some of these years. Here's that example of the post-secondary entrance, and to give the definition off to the side here, that's the percentage of graduating class enrolled in the two- or four-year post-secondary institution at any time during the first year after high school graduation. So if they, they take that, you know, I know there's not really a gap year for high schoolers, but if they decide after high school that they're not ready for college, but then they go later on, that doesn't reflect here. If they go that different pathway into the workforce, unfortunately, that's not reflected here. If they go into the military, that's not reflected here, which could all be good choices in certain circumstances. Art access, you can see we had a big dip here. And something else, as we talked about, the controlling the controllables, there's an element to the accuracy of the reporting. So I've worked with our administrative team and with Jacques to make sure that what we're sending off to the state is accurate. We had some question about that down here, and you can see that we had a significant spike following year, and we've been doing a better job of that. But that's an area we want to look, is there something we can do with dance or theater or changing up our music offerings that make kids want to be involved in those areas a little bit more? Physical fitness, as I talked about, that participation target is ninety percent or higher. We've been above that target all the time, so we're getting some nice Accountability Index points there. And our performance, you know, we continue to trend in that sixty percent of our students meeting that standard. Here's a slide that kind of gives you a breakdown of the school level highlights and some of the ratings that they had and their accomplishments. So this is a chart that we did take from Canton as well, and I wanted to show this before we get into the school categories. So Canton made this and shared a copy with everybody that was there and thought that it might be, give it a nice visual. So everything that's in green is an area that the elementary school actually increased year to year. The red is actually an increase because we're decreasing chronic absenteeism. So the ones that don't have a figure, they're not rated at the elementary school. So in every category, except physical fitness, participation rate, the elementary school improved from last year to twenty-four, twenty-five. Ironically, their overall category rating as a school went down. So that was a question that we had at the state, like, how is that possible? They improved in every single area, how can they move down? So there are certain rules within these category classifications that one of them takes into account the trend performance. And in our three-year dataset for high needs learners, our growth rate did not meet the state expectation. So we have been invited to work with the state to come up with an action plan. We're going, in the first week of December, the administrative team and I are going to learn more about that process. It's something that we're trying to really have a growth mindset about. You know, we know that this is an area that's been identified by the state. We're looking forward to working with them and improving, but I wanted to not let that overshadow that the elementary school made progress in every rated indicator with the exception of participation rate in physical fitness. This is the middle school chart. Again, you see a lot of green, and the red here is again for that chronic absenteeism. So other than the academic growth for ELA, all students, every one of them was a positive. They had a situation, another one of those decision-making rules that the state has regarding participation. The middle school was a category two, so there's five categories, one being the highest and five what they call like a turnaround school. And the, the middle school was at a level two in twenty-three, twenty-four, and this year they're at a level three, and it was in relation to participation rate. This is the high school. You can see, this is again one of these tricky interpretations of the data. Our chart here has more red than the other schools, but Lyman moved from a level three to a level two. So their overall category performance went up. And if you remember back several slides ago, I had that kind of rainbow colored chart that had the weightings. So a lot depends on, in those heavily weighted categories, how'd you do? And that kind of all relates to the, to the school category rating. So here is the numerical indexes and the categories along with the explanation of why schools are rated where they are. And some of those decision-making rules that I just highlighted are also here for a little bit of a deeper dive. Overall, you know, I think there's a lot to celebrate in terms of educator excellence and impact. Our growth is above the state average. I think that reflects our teacher effectiveness in the targeted PD that Rita has led. I think the structures we have in our, in our school district with the collaborative PLCs, instructional coaching is definitely driving this measurable improvement. Our POG and educator initiatives to build this academic culture, I think, is a contributing factor. And without a doubt, reduced absenteeism, the more that the kids are in our building in front of our teachers, the better they're going to do. Some other key takeaways, we continue to exceed state averages in ELA and math for academic growth. We talked about our emphasis on equity and engagement, the readiness, our graduation and post-secondary outcomes are strong. Highlighted our teacher prowess on the previous slide. And this is a, you know, kind of a budget tie-in, right? I think this is, has to be a sustained investment that we continue to fund our district in the way that it needs to be so that we can have this level of performance. All right? So that was a lot. Tried to do it as concisely as possible. What I do want you to know is that with that packet, please take some time to read through it, digest it a little bit more, ask questions, and know that simultaneously, we're working as an administrative team. I had a meeting today with Rita and the high school administration, a meeting with Chad later this week, met with Jess already. We're talking about what does that data mean? What can we control? What decisions can we make a little bit differently to impact? An improvement in our ratings, yes, but just doing overall what's best for kids. You know, you've heard me say before that the data is important, but that's not what it's all about. So we're trying to take this data as another data point and meld it with all the other things we're doing to make the best overall experience for our students. Any questions like in the moment?
Carl?
Yes, so when I look at the charts on twelve and thirteen, and I go back to the weighted graphs and also on page ten with the goals, is, is those numbers a, like a seventy-one? Is that seventy-one out of a hundred? Or is, I mean, where is, where is the range of, how is that graded? And I know there's different weights, but how is each ingrained on its own individual?
Yeah, so that's where all of these different kind of mathematical calculations of where they take like scale score for each individual student over the highest possible score minus the lowest possible score. That gives the students individual performance index. They take all the students, put them together, and come up with the district.
Get rid of the high, get rid of the low, and say that's where it's at.
And then they put it all together to give the entire district.
Paul?
Page thirteen, where we see the four for LES and the three for LMS and the two for eleven. For LES, is there anything off the top of your head that you can think of that is attributing to the little score?
Yeah, so it's actually been identified for us. So I talked a little bit about that set of data over three years. So our high needs population, while it's growing, is still not reaching the target that the state has set for that growth. So because it's over the three years, we haven't met that growth, we've been identified as a focus area, a focus school for that one area. So I tried to highlight in this other chart here. That the, yeah, this is it, that the elementary school improved in every category, twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, even in the high needs growth. It just hasn't reached the target that the state has set. So when we meet with the state, we're going to be talking about what can we do? We're pretty confident. We've addressed and improved our MTSS structures and systems. We've got new tier-one curriculums that we've brought in. So I feel like we've already taken a lot of the steps that the state is going to say, hey, have you considered? We're going to be able to say, yes, have you considered? We're going to be able to say, yes. Still trying to move that needle to hit that target is going to be, you know, the tricky part.
So basically, LMS and Lyman have higher scores just because the kids are in school for longer, like they've had more years to grow themselves and their mindset and all that.
I don't know that that's exactly how I would interpret that. You know, again, it's, it's these decision-making rules that I shared later on down here, like why the state identifies, how they identifies, and you know, where is it here? So schools initially placed in these categories will drop one category if one or more following are present. So there's like all these different rules that can affect your placement. If that high needs growth had met the target, the elementary school would not be a focus school. You could argue that they might be a level two. Similarly, at the middle school, that drop was because of one of these outlier situations. Their overall performance is not necessarily reflected in that rating. So I try not to get too caught up. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I mean, in the case of the middle school, their enrollment is the smallest, right? So two families who opt out of the test, that was the drop. That's all it takes.
Specifically, there were three, three students.
Yeah.
So in the high needs area, in the high needs area, for the NGSS science test only, participation rate was ninety-four point nine percent.
And if you look.
Because three students who were designated as high needs, families did not have them take the test.
Oh, wow.
You automatically get dropped a category if you're below ninety-five. And again, we were ninety-four point nine.
And the high school, I mean, Andy alluded this a couple of times, but something the high, the high schools in the same boat. Five students choose not to do X, Y, Z, it's a drop. So it's, yeah, when your enrollment is those now.
Yeah, so that definition Chad hit it spot on. So schools initially placed in categories one or two, the middle school was a two, will drop one category if one or more of the following are present, the last bullet. An assessment participation rate below ninety-five, ninety-four point nine in that case, in any subject for all students or students with high needs.
And that dropped them to a three.
Yeah.
Sad.
So any other questions?
For the four-year graduation rate of eighty-three point one, for our school size, is that state average? Is that?
So I could have included the, the chart that shows the state averages, too. It just, I know everything was small already, it would have just condensed it. We're comfortably above state average in almost every category. And without even pulling it up, I could say that even our four-year graduation rate stays above. It's not where we want it. You can see that back in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had ninety-seven point four. But as I, you know, without isolating specific student situations, and because we have a small population, I want to be careful that I'm not like identifying any students, but if you have one or two students elect to go a different track.
It can drop.
It can drop you. Like, so if we have a graduating class of seventy-two kids, every kid is like a point Like, so if we have a graduating class of seventy-two kids, every kid is like a point and a half, so you have three or four of those situations and, you know, you have a significant impact to your.
And Rachel, one of the things we talked about today, um, with the high, with the high school admin was beginning to dive a little deeper, that Ed site is an amazing site, to dive a little deeper in, yes, we're above the state average, but is that where we wanna, no, we always wanna improve. So let's look at the schools and the districts that are similar to us, are similar sizes, and let's see where we compare to that. So that's like a next step, for example, for the high school.
Something else that I neglected to point out, and, and this is a celebration and a challenge at the same time. Jay, how many sending schools do we have?
Twelve, thirteen.
We have twelve or thirteen, right? So if Lebanon was just, everybody's coming up from Lebanon Middle School, we have a great data set on those students. We have conversations in ongoing fashion about those students many times from when they're in preschool, right up to the high school. So we can hit the ground running with supports. We're receiving students from twelve different towns or districts or, or schools that we're just meeting as freshmen. So they might not be coming with the prerequisite skills that we have supported, and we might not know all about their learner profile for a good amount of time. To get them on track can be a challenge. So it's, it's a total celebration, and we're so proud of the fact that we have a diverse population that draws from all these sending schools. But it is a challenge in meeting some of these targets. Not an excuse, but a challenge. Any other questions? Again, I know it was a lot. Thank you for, for those great questions, and if you have more, just send them my way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
Moving on to the finance report. Documentation starts on page forty-five.
Uh, the first thing I wanted to mention is, uh, tonight you're gonna be voting on the surplus. We have finally put last year's spending to bed, so yay to that. In fact, the town received the draft financial statements, I believe, uh, two weeks ago. The end of October, they got those drafts, which is the earliest in Haley and I's tenure that that's happened. We're both fairly new. I mean, I've only been here a year and a half, almost two years. So we're very, very proud of that, and there were no management comment, uh, in the letter, in the audit this year. So that's also phenomenal for us.
Could I take a moment to celebrate Martha's leadership and the administrators who oversee their own building-based budgets? When you look at a budget over twenty-two million dollars to come in with a surplus of thirteen thousand dollars, which is not even a tenth of a percentage point, I think that's, uh, very good management of the budget. So, you know, I'm pleased to be able to do that. You know, if we could come in at, you know, to the cent, obviously that's what we aim to do, but I think when you're talking about over twenty-two million dollars and having less than a tenth of a percentage point as a, as a surplus, it's something that, that I'm definitely proud of.
And just to that point, Andy, I, I know that there was a lot of, you know, on the financial side, from the building administrators, all the administrators, and from you, Andy, and, uh, all the staff, at various points, there were stops and goes during course of the year. As far as, you know, we're locking down all purchasing, we're nothing. And in order to try to make sure that, because some numbers were coming in, not necessarily because of spending, but because of outside influence, everything from, you know, special education cost, you know, blessing cost, whatever, utilities. So, um, it's a, it's a credit to each of you, and thank you for that, because it's a huge, I know it's a tough nut to crack, and it's not easy. And it's not easy for us to, to listen to on a monthly basis either, but it, you know, it, proof comes out in the pudding that there was, that you ended up so close and in positive. So, thank you for that.
Uh, looking at this year's spending, um, you know, we, we're so far on target. Uh, the five-year average is sixty percent. We're at sixty-three percent, uh, so we're on track. I did highlight a couple of lines for you that, um, might look odd because of some negative numbers, especially one that has a remaining balance right now that's already in the negative, but that is because of a purchase that we had to make on the front end that we'll be getting reimbursed for, for two of the final welding booths for welding program. So we will be getting reimbursed from EB by the district to put the expense out.
Martha, can I jump in just again about our new board members? So one of the new pathways we're trying to provide to our learners is through a welding pathway where they can learn some skills and potentially be part of the electric boat pipeline. We were able to get five welding booths and, um, and machines at no cost. Electric boat and Yukon and through our Perkins grant, we were able to, we, we haven't outfitted the space yet. That's our next step is to construct, uh, the machines and set up that space, but we are going to have like, uh, industry-grade machines and materials that can hopefully set our students up. I know we talked about post-secondary entrance and, and how we can raise that. This is probably not gonna help this, but it will set our kids up for success in, in potential future careers that are profitable and, and something that can, they can sustain for, for many years to come, so it's exciting. So I just wanted to add that.
Uh, one of the other lines was the library books. In the current year, the current month's spending, you're gonna notice that there's a negative number, and that's because of the passing of a past educator. Another faculty member that had worked with that individual took it upon herself to have donations collected, and they wanted them to go towards the library, towards the purchase of books. So, uh, that's being coordinated with the librarian at the middle school, and plates will be put in whatever books are purchased to identify that they were the result of a memorial gift. The only other thing that I wanted to highlight is, um, of course, our non-lapsing. With the projected projects, um, we will have a balance of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars and three cents. And that does include, um, I have included the surplus in that number already, so that does include thirteen thousand that will be officially on tonight, but for presentation stakes, I wanted to make sure it was in there.
Any questions?
Yeah, um, on page fifty, uh, school study, I'm just curious why there's still a remaining balance from the hundred thousand?
Because not all the money was spent.
Okay, good.
It's, I would leave it at this point up to Haley if she wants to close it out. I don't know if there's gonna be any further expenses to that line, um, but it would be money that would go back, you know, that they retain in their balances. A little bit that was remaining from the SLAM study.
And that wasn't, that was.
That was surplus money, yeah.
And that's similar to any of the other projects that we receive fund anytime we come under, I think?
They.
Maybe the, uh, what's it called? Access control.
Access control might have a slight surplus to that. We'll go back to the town, but there could potentially be more invoices coming in for that, so.
As for the SLAM, um, there, I know that there was, uh, you know, a legal bill between the two, you know, the SLAM and the, um, the other one starting, so, you know, certainly that may be a.
Thank you, Martha. Thanks, Martha.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. Is there a motion to allocate twenty-four, twenty-five remaining funds to non-lapsing?
So moved.
My second.
Do you want to list the amount? We just had it up at.
Twenty-eight.
No, that's the. Thirteen thousand forty dollars.
So, the motion is to allocate the remaining thirteen thousand forty dollars from the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five, um, funds to non-lapsing. Motion by Nicole, seconded by Brian. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Next, we will act on the twenty-twenty-six Board of Education meeting dates. That is on page fifty-four.
Make a motion that we approve the twenty, oppose twenty-twenty-six Board of Ed meeting dates.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion?
Question, November tenth, is there an election that year for Board of Ed members? Is that cutting it close?
Okay. Perfect. You will notice a couple of dates. April is the first week of April instead of the second because of.
School break. We're gonna wanna go to the third because we'd conflict with Board of Finance.
Yep.
And then just a reminder to board members, no July meeting, and that's typically when we would do a retreat.
Yep. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is Carrie, John, Nicole, Brian, Dawn, Rachel, Donnell, and Elizabeth. All opposed? Extension. Next, act on the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school calendar. That is on page fifty-five.
Make a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school calendar for the Lebanon Public Schools.
Second. Motion by Brian, seconded by Nicole. Any discussion?
Just to give the board a little bit of context, so I've, uh, shared a few different drafts with different bargaining units. I've had conversation with our administrative team, probably most specifically with Rita, so that we could be strategic about where our professional development days go. So the kind of consensus feedback, because you can't have agreement spot-on from every single person who gives you that feedback, was they didn't like having convocation on a Friday, that the three PD days in a row to start the year was a little too much. So that's the minor shift that you'll see here. There's, uh, new staff orientation still will take place on a Friday, but convocation will be on Monday. There will only be the two professional development days to start the year before the first half-day welcoming our learners back. With this proposal, we'll still get in all the professional development days that we need to, and our last day of school will be Wednesday, June night.
Question.
Yeah?
So last year, I know this didn't happen, but previous years, when we had like, for example, the October twelfth holiday, like professional development was the Friday before to try to make a long weekend?
Yep. How do I say this nicely? It ended up being a long weekend for everyone.
Ah, okay. Okay. Fair enough.
Understandable.
And, okay, question number two.
Not everyone. More people than maybe we want.
When we do these calendars, we try to coordinate, am I correct? We try to coordinate with other schools in the area?
Districts, yeah. So there were calendars shared at my original superintendent group meetings, there were calendars shared from East Con. We do that mostly because we do have a lot of educator families so that we can align the dates. Uh, there was like a emphasis on trying to do like cross-district collaboration for PD. It doesn't really happen all that much, but, uh, we are, our starting dates, our ending dates, our April break, very similar to other districts, at least what has been proposed.
Comments, questions? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is Carrie, John, Nicole, Brian, Dawn, Rachel, Donnell, and Elizabeth. All who oppose, please raise your hand. Extension. Um, my new. Act on the twenty-twenty-six graduation date. Is there a motion to act on the graduation, as the twenty-twenty-six graduation date of June twelfth?
Motion to approve June twelfth, twenty-twenty-six as the graduation date for Lyman.
Motion by Nicole, seconded by Brian. Any discussion?
So I will flag for everybody on the board, new and board members that are returning, that this is sooner than what we approved it in previous years, uh, but still not as soon as some other districts. Some districts.
Today is sooner.
Today is sooner, yeah, sorry. If you choose to approve it, it would be sooner. Some districts identify the graduation date like when they're setting the next year's calendar. So we just approved the twenty-six, twenty-seven, some set the graduation date at that point. Others wait until they feel that, uh, every weather possible event has passed us. We're kind of somewhere in the middle, but we have received feedback from our community, specifically those that wanna support our graduating seniors, that it's tough for travel for families that are coming in, it's tough for like the post-graduation events because they start getting booked up. So this one is tricky because, uh, it's early, we haven't hit the winter season yet, it is on a Friday, so that if we were to set the graduation date, the worst-case scenario would be that if we have a school cancellation, there would be school on Monday or Tuesday the following week, those seniors would have graduated on Friday.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of approving the graduation date of June twelfth, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Items for next agenda, um, in December, we will have a board training presented by the board's attorney. CT statute requires all new Board of Education members and re-elected, um, Board of Education members to take training. So he and he her, that. And I know that we have multiple first reads that will be on the agenda. Is there any other agenda item you'd like to see?
To approve the welding pathway, of course?
Oh, yeah.
Will it be presented to the?
The subcommittee?
The subcommittee will meet that night.
Okay.
You'll be at that night.
Agenda items can always be emailed. The Governance Committee meets the Wednesday, first Wednesday? First Wednesday?
Yes.
Unless there's another meeting happening, then we'll try to back it up or couple it up, so have until the Wednesday before our board meeting, or the first Wednesday of the month, to email those items.
The subcommittees?
Yes.
One is governance meeting to assign the chairs and all the members of the subcommittee names.
I just have to talk to the governance members to find a date, so they'll definitely be assigned prior to the December meeting. And anyone who, I, I, I think you asked, but Chelsea tends to send an email to, they email and ask, do you want to host a subcommittee this month? And if, um, you do, then they just ask your agenda items. If there's something that, if you're thinking, I don't need to host one, but there's something that comes up that we feel like needs to be discussed, then we'll ask you to host one.
If I could just add, to be mindful that time is going to be very short on that Tuesday in December. Curriculum is already kind of planning to meet, and then we have the training, so.
So I was thinking if you could, it established by the end of November, someone had to meet on December second or that week before the Board of Ed meeting, they could.
Yeah, we're gonna, I think we did it pretty quickly last time, too.
Yeah.
Yep. And while we are lucky to have Hannah here for the board meeting, we do not have a Hannah for all of the subcommittee meetings, or any of the subcommittee meetings, so, um, the chair is responsible for submitting minutes. And there is a quick turnaround required.
Statutorily.
Please don't forget to hand us your sheets with your wishes. We will adjourn at eight fifty-six. Good job.